I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. Could you call the roll, please?
Honorable Michael Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Swarthout.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Elliott is absent. Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Alderman Haddad.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under my comments this evening, I have several. Number one, I want to thank all the citizens over the past two and a half weeks. We have had extraordinary events happening here within the city. The amount of snow we got, the type of snow we got, and our salt delivery supply line, which is now refilled and open again. The citizens have been very gracious and understanding in our going forward of putting the conditions we've had to be under. I have talked to a number of other cities within the area, and a number of them are suffering a fate worse than ours because they do not have any salt nor whether they be getting any salt, and they've stopped plowing their streets altogether on the side streets. So while I realize it is frustrating for some of our citizens to go through this, and it's frustrating to not have the amount of street cleaning we have done in the past, I do want you to be assured that we are aware of the situation, that every one of us has been getting daily updates from the city manager and staff, and that we do understand that we want to do the best we can for the city streets, and I appreciate everyone being patient and their support that they've given us over the past two and a half weeks. The second item that I wanted to discuss was I had the pleasure last weekend of talking to two cities that a number of our residents go to for winter break, and if you want to know how well-run our city is after that comparison, I want to say thank you to the staff and to this council for the support and effort they have given this city. We are miles ahead, and I never realized how far ahead we were until I was there, but we are miles ahead of where other cities are as far as how well we're run, how well the staff does, how little we -- much we do with how little we have. And so I want to say thank you to everybody because this city made me look good this weekend, and, you know, I could take the accolades down there and feel very proud and pat myself on the back, but I know when I come home, it's this group right here and our staff that's out there that's making it work this way, so thank you to all of you. And I do want to finally report that my comments, I'm very proud that 13 inches of snow and my front lawn is still in place. Thank you.[265.33][265.33](Laughter) That ends my comments.
My understanding is that community was 80 degrees, so maybe we should all get on a plane and go down there and help straighten them out, too.[275.33][275.33](Laughter) Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item under my agenda is a resolution that's in your packet beginning on page eight. And let me just give a little background. As the council knows, back in July of '07, the City of Lake Forest held a forum to talk about the state of public pensions in Illinois and particularly with respect to the police and fire pensions within Lake Forest and IMRF for the employees of the City of Lake Forest. As a result of that meeting, it has generated a lot of conversation and discussion throughout the state of Illinois and has also led to the introduction of legislation that has been authored and put forward by Representative Karen May and Susan Garrett on behalf of the City of Lake Forest. Let me first talk about the resolution that's in your packet. This draft resolution really came to us from the Illinois Municipal League, who has taken up the cause throughout the state of Illinois with respect to this pension crisis that exists and is constantly growing every year. The resolution basically is twofold. Number one, it requests and urges our state representatives not to grant any more enhancement benefit increases to police, fire, IMRF until this structural problem can get worked out. The second thing is to then support other modifications that are being introduced, namely our legislation, which I referred to on the investment side of the pension equation, as well as just other administrative and reporting conditions that take place within the state of Illinois on what are the state of pensions and the costs and so on and so forth. So it is the staff's recommendation that the City Council approve the resolution that is before you this evening, forward this resolution on to our respective state legislators and also the Illinois Municipal League and the Northwest Municipal Conference, and I think it's fairly safe to say that there will be hundreds of communities in the state of Illinois that are going to be passing a similar resolution over the course of the next 60 to 90 days. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think you're all familiar with this. We've had a lot of conversations about it over the years. I will also actually just point out that you do have in front of you, you should have received a report from Mike Avey, President of Lake Forest Police Pension Fund, on sort of the state of the Lake Forest Police Pension Fund, and also indicating their support of the draft resolution. I also noticed that we have in the audience Bob Henderson, who is, I believe you're the President of the Fire Pension Board, and sitting next to him is Mary Tominek, who is a consultant with their pension board, and I have to give Mary, while she's here, credit for helping us draft the legislation that you have seen that has been submitted to Springfield on improving the investment opportunities that are available to our pension funds, because that has been a handcuff on our police and fire pension for a number of years and that really, as most residents have seen, their 401Ks and so forth expand in value. Our pension boards, because of state legislation, didn't grant them the same authorities to invest in many of the same instruments that you and I are able to invest in for our own personal portfolios, and hopefully this legislation will loosen up those reins to a certain extent and increase the rate of return that our pension funds are realizing on their investments each year. So I'll conclude my comments on this item. With that, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, you do.
Any questions?
No questions. I would again just echo the comments that I think I've made previously to staff and others involved in this, that we've been able to push this forward. I mean, this really came out of discussions we've had over the last year and then over the pension forum that we had with a lot of different individuals last summer, and I think it's great the progress we've made and great that we have these bills in front of the legislature.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution relating to police and firefighting firefighters' pension fund reform.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Haddad.
Aye.
Seven yays, no nays, the motion carries.
I probably should ask Bob, you or Mary didn't want to say anything, did you?[556.16][556.16](Laughter)
Not really.[558.16][558.16](Laughter)
And again, Mary, thank you for your help in getting this put together. Okay, now I move on to a really fun subject: snow.[568.66][568.66](Laughter)
No, this isn't a fun subject because we're driving down the road. Every time we pass a gas station, my wife says, "Look, there's salt for sale. Look, there's salt for sale."[581.16][581.16](Laughter) Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me begin by saying that I don't think anybody within the City of Lake Forest, certainly the staff, the City Council, and the residents, are really happy with the current quality of our streets or have been the quality of streets for the last month, but I think it's important to indicate that it certainly hasn't been a lack of effort. It hasn't been a lack of equipment, and as you will see from this presentation, it really comes down to an issue of supply, and that's one of the things that we have to, as a community, sort of address long-term. You'll see, and I know it's been frustrating for the staff at times, as it's been frustrating for the residents, because we, and I know personally, I fielded one call from a resident who says, "We never see your trucks on our streets. What the hell are you guys doing?" And then we have a situation with a resident in my neighborhood who sees our truck coming down the street and runs out in the middle of the road and says, "Stop. I'm tired of you putting piles of snow at the end of my driveway," and proceeds to give them the salute with the one finger.[661.43][661.43](Laughter) So you're getting it on both sides in terms of what we're doing or not doing, and I know that that's been difficult for everybody, but I think hopefully with this, we can understand what's going on. Let me sort of put this in context, because I think most people don't realize that a 15-year average of the City of Lake Forest is we get just shy of 37 inches of snow. To date, we've had 65 inches of snow. One of the other things I wanted to point out up there, too, because we did hear from a few residents, particularly after the storm the first week of February, was, "Well, how come Chicago is so much better than Lake Forest?" Well, in that storm, Chicago, I think, got three inches when we got 14 inches. So there's a huge difference even in a very short geographic area that we have here in Chicago, but as you can see in that period of time, or this past year, we've actually seen almost a 77% increase in the amount of snow that we've received in our community. The City of Lake Forest, on an average, has been purchasing from the state of Illinois approximately 2,100 tons of salt. This year, we've actually used 2,800 tons, and you'll see later on, we still have about 700 tons available, so we're currently up to about seven, or I'm sorry, 3,500 tons of salt just in this year, which right now is a 35% increase, and as the council knows, has gone beyond not only our budget but what our authorized levels are in the state of Illinois. I think the other thing, and, you know, people look at storms, but they really, I don't think, understand the number of events that city staff is out plowing. On an average, we are either plowing or salting about 22 times a year. So far this year, it's been 28 events, and quite honestly, I think we can plan on about four to six more before the season is over based on experience in the past. So we're going to be up to approximately 10 more events than we do on a normal basis. Let me talk about the salt bid, and I apologize for boring the council because they're somewhat familiar with this, but I think it will be helpful for the residents at home. The city, as I said, currently has a contract for approximately 2,000 tons at $41.65. What happens is in the summer months, the state will contact us and say, "All right, how much salt do you want to purchase?" We give them an amount based on historical experience, and then they go out and bid it. In this past year, the bid price was $41.65. That is what we are locked in for. We must purchase at least 70% of that, or approximately 1,400 tons, whether we use it or not, and we may go up to 130%. And when I say "may," there are no guarantees you will get 130%. Now, this year, fortunately, we were able to get our 130%, but if there is a run on it, and as we learned this year, the state also hordes a certain amount for their own roads, that that may or may not be available, but we were able this year to buy approximately 130% at the $41.65. Now, we also can go out and we can purchase market price if available, but I will tell you that for approximately 30 days, we did go out, and as the council knows, at our last meeting, we talked about the fact that we moved quickly and were able to purchase an additional 400 tons at about 50% increase over that $41, which we thought was really a pretty good deal. Unfortunately, as you'll see, that after we purchased it, it took them almost two weeks to deliver that salt. One of the reasons was that shortly after we locked it in for about $60 a ton, they were selling it for about $120 a ton, and most recently, as you know, we had to go all the way to Virginia, or I'm sorry, to New Jersey to purchase another 400 tons at about $190 a ton. So that price has fluctuated extremely, or to great extremes, over the past 30 days as not just Lake Forest, but all communities in Illinois, Indiana, Iowa are suffering the same fate. The other issue that really does affect us as well is our storage capacity. This is currently at our MS site. We have two salt bins, which have approximately 300-ton capacity on each side, and historically, what we have done is we've, in the winter months, stored salt in both bins. We've also had about 200 tons out under tarps, so we have approximately 800 tons onsite, particularly at the beginning of the year. What we try and do, however, is we try and hit the end of the year with only approximately 300 tons in here, because then we turn around and for nine months of the year, we'll use this for storage of black dirt and other material that public works facilities use. So unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, our street superintendent and our staff have really tried to do a wonderful job of predicting when storms were coming, ordering salt, and making sure that we didn't have a lot on hand at the end of the year because, quite honestly, we had nowhere to store that salt at the end of the year. As I indicated, we did purchase from Cargill approximately at $60 a ton. I put in the order prior to the City Council meeting. The City Council ratified it, I believe it was on February 4th, but even with that order, because of the weather and because of other demands, we did not get that additional 400 tons until February 12th. On the 15th, just as a precautionary measure, again, because of the concerns with the availability of salt, we went ahead and we purchased 200 tons of sand. Now, let me pause here for a moment because this is something that some communities have gone to. Actually, if you look to the community just south of us, that's what basically they're putting down. They don't even have salt anymore. They're just putting down sand on their streets. Sand does not melt ice. All sand does is it gives you traction, and the other big problem with sand is that in the springtime, it gets in your storm sewers, and then we're in there cleaning those things out because it doesn't go anywhere, and then it just clogs up your storm sewer system. And so we have tried to avoid using sand in the past. We have used it under emergency situations. We do have it onsite if we do continue to have emergency situations, but we are going to make every effort not to use the sand if we can avoid it. I will tell you, and I have another chart to show you later on in the presentation, but really, for much the month of January and February, our staff has been calling pretty much every potential vendor in the United States looking to see where salt is available. That includes, you know, as far west, as I said, as New Jersey, Kentucky, Pennsylvania, and this most recent that we purchased, and while it says it's Chemical Equipment Labs out of Virginia, it actually was shipped to us via New Jersey, and we ordered that on the 15th of February, and it was, in this case, received on the 18th of February, and we understand that there's still 25 tons, or there's one semi that is broken down somewhere in Ohio that is still en route and will be here shortly.
Sure it wasn't hijacked?
Yeah, right. It may have gotten hijacked, is right.[1108.01][1108.01](Laughter) But as of tonight's meeting, we currently do have 750 tons of salt on hand to hopefully take us through the remaining season that we have in Lake Forest. Let me also talk about plowing priorities, because we handle a lot of phone calls, and I'm sure you did, too, to try to explain to people what is our priority, and I would also say that this is plowing and salting priorities. First and foremost, are your primary, your main arterial streets, then your collector streets, the subdivision side streets, the cul-de-sacs, then we get into the parking lots, sidewalks, park facilities, and then finally, we will haul the snow away from the business districts. When we were in a situation, starting in about early January, where we could see that we had already achieved 100% of our salt and we still had a long way to go, we started to scale back in terms of what we were salting, and really, the cutoff was right there between the primary and secondary, and using it not only in primary, secondary, but then also for hills, intersections, and curves. And that reduced our annual application from approximately 120 tons, which is what we will do at the beginning of the season under some storm conditions, to about 50 to 75 tons, depending on the discretion of the driver. So as you can see, and particularly the storm that we had in early February, that there were a number of areas that were receiving no salt, which really exacerbated the situation because of the nature of the storm that we experienced. But I think the important thing also for people to understand is that, you know, we see these as lower priorities, and I know we got phone calls about like the train platforms, why they hadn't been done and so forth, but our feeling is that if we can't get these streets done, it doesn't matter how good the train platforms are, because you're not going to catch the train anyways if you can't get there. Also, I think it's important for the community to understand, just in terms of the manpower that we do have, our street section has seven full-time, one supervisor, four seasonal, but the way, the nature in which we operate is every public works employee, every park employee, and actually, in some cases, we've reached out for other people who were at one time in public works and are now operating in other sections of the city, that we will tap much anybody that has a valid driver's license, a Class C driver's license, to really get behind a truck and to help out and to work through that situation. The other thing that the council is aware of that really had an impact on this about four years ago is that when the city reduced its personnel by 10 positions, five of those positions were in the public works area, and so by eliminating those positions, we actually had to eliminate two plow routes and one parking lot route. And where the impact really comes in is that in Lake Forest, we currently have about 240 lane miles of streets, so that's really 120 miles of streets, but you're going in, you know, both directions. We have 14 plow routes, which include the three cul-de-sac routes, and a three-inch storm will take us approximately four hours to complete a plow route. So that used to be three prior to reducing the manpower levels. Now it takes four, but as we saw on, in, was it February 5th through the 7th, we had 14 inches. That easily will take six hours, and again, when it was coming down as fast as it was, which I'll mention here in a second, literally all we're doing is the main arterials just to keep up with it. But so when someone says, "We never see you," it's because if we're there, we won't be back for six hours in a normal situation, or four hours in a normal situation, simply because that's the time it takes for us to go through the entire route. Let's talk about the storm that we had, because this was a very interesting and unique storm, and let me preface all of this by saying if this storm had occurred in December and we had 800 tons of salt, we wouldn't be standing here today, because you recall that it started as rain, and then the rain went to slush, slush went to ice, ice went to snow. And so the real problem that we had was, and also the time of the day, is that you had the cars who were driving over the snow, and at this time, I think we just had approximately 200 to 300 tons of salt available, and we could have come in and literally dropped that salt down, and you wouldn't have had the buildup. Unfortunately, in hindsight, we would also not have had any salt in the City of Lake Forest for a period of two weeks, which, as it turned out, when the temperatures dropped and we had very dangerous icing conditions and so forth, it would not have been a very good situation for us to be in. The thing that also caused the problem, as we will all remember, is that we had the severe temperature drops as well, and just like today, if you walked outside, you will see salt on the road. It's not going anywhere and nothing's happening, because once you get below 20 degrees, the salt is really not effective. A 28-degree day with sun is perfect for us, and that means that the salt will work. It will take care of many of the ice, although in some cases now, as we all learned after this last week, when we had 40 degrees and rain, when it's so thick, it's not all going to go away right away. But so it was a combination of starting out as rain, turning to ice and snow, the fact that at the height of the storm, we were probably having two inches per hour of snow coming down, and therefore, our crews were just dedicated to main arterial streets and the collector streets, and that's where the side streets really started to pile up very quickly. The other thing I think that people don't realize, that it wasn't just that one storm in, on February 5th through the 7th, that in February alone, we've had almost 29 inches on eight snow events, and that was part of the other problem, in that we were running crews 12-hour shifts, and when you're plowing, doing parking lots, and trying to haul snow and all the other things, we reached a point where we just had too many events in too short a period of time, and we were running out of bodies. As I said, we were concentrating and salting the main arterials. We tried to plow the residential streets, but we didn't use the salt there, which then again made it very difficult to try and get the streets back because of the limited supply of salt that we had. We did, because of safety, and in consultation with police and fire, we really on the 11th, even though we hadn't yet received the salt, but we knew it was coming and we knew it was on its way, that's when we started again going back and hitting the hills, curves, and intersections in the residential areas. One thing of note that I think is, I think you sort of lose perspective on, is that we have done two business district cleanups. We've hauled the snow out to West Campus, and there's been over 1,000 truckloads of snow have been hauled out to West Campus during this period of time. Now, the news, I know the City Council doesn't want to hear, but certainly I put it up there to address, you know, what have you been doing, but as you can see, our overtime is currently sitting at about $143,000, which is 63% over budget, and our budget for salt and de-icing is already 125% over budget. So again, it's, we've been putting the people on the streets, we've been trying to buy salt whenever it's been available, but also unfortunately, it hasn't been available because everybody has been trying to find it. Let me also mention our salt application policy, because this is something, again, that if the City Council wants to modify this policy, we can certainly do that, but for the past 12 years, due to what we believe are environmental concerns, sensible salting, and also cost considerations, we've been averaging approximately 13 pounds per lane mile, and that's the adjustment we use on the spreaders as terms of how much salt is coming out the back of the truck. There are other communities north and south using anywhere from 500 pounds per lane mile to 1,000, and there's a large city to the south that does use 1,000, and you know, because when it starts snowing, it's like raining on the streets because they've put down so much salt. We could certainly adjust, and we can certainly increase that. It will have impacts, and I think some of us can remember dating back to not too long ago when we were putting down a lot more. That's when you get the grass burning out on the side of the street. That's when you get the landscape material burning out on the side of the street as the plows are pushing the snow away, because of just the intensity of salt that is included or mixed in with that snow. Also, it's going to be the cost applications, because right now, at 300 pounds, 2,100 tons, which is our annual application, it costs about $87,000. So if we wanted to go to 500 pounds application, our annual salt demand would be approximately 3,500 tons at 146,000 and obviously 7,292. So there is definitely a cost consideration in addition to the environmental consideration that exists as well. Let me talk about additional considerations, because since this has occurred, and as I said, one of the limitations, looking back on this, that we really have had, has been the salt storage facility. Has this worked for the last 12 years? Absolutely. I think this was only the second time in 12 years that we have exceeded our allocation of salt. So, you know, I think, again, we tip our hats to the streets employees. They know how much they use, and this has sort of been a very unique situation, but the limitation we have is that we don't have the ability to store large amounts of salt and keep them, because they're not going to go bad in the summer, so we could keep them, but we can't, we can't store them. We have no location to store them. And so one of the things, just within the past week, and when we met last week with the committee to talk about the municipal services building, is to look at taking the salt storage that is proposed there and making it larger. Now, let me, again, go back. We currently have about 800 tons that we can store at our current MS site, 600 indoors, 200 outdoors. In the new facility, the original plan was to build 900 tons storage, basically two 450-ton storage base. The staff is now recommending that we push that up to 1,200 tons, which would be two 600, because the other limitation we do have on the new site is a part of our core permit, we are not going to be able to store any outdoors. They're going to be very restrictive about storing any salt outdoors like we do right now. The other, if we move in that direction, the other thing the staff will do The other, if we move in that direction, the other thing the staff will do is we will also look, as a part of the budget that will be coming to you here shortly too, is to kick up our annual purchase from the state of Illinois. And if we look at going at our 100% level of about, from 2,100 to 3,500, then we could go down to anywhere from 2,450, which is 70% of that allocation, or all the way up to 4,500. Again, it will be very difficult this first year because of space limitations, but if we go to the larger bins at the new facility, then we will be able to, be able to store that without any operational difficulties. The other thing I'll mention too, is that as I said in the outset, you know, the staff really hasn't been pleased with the way, you know, if you talk to any of the plow drivers, they wish they could have dumped a lot of salt down, they wish they could have done these things. But practically, that wasn't, that wasn't a possibility, and so they don't feel that they met the standard that the residents have come to expect. We will be going back at the end of this year, we will be debriefing, we'll be looking at every aspect of our operations and saying, "Are there other things that we can do?" Again, we don't want to overreact from a fiscal responsibility standpoint and do something that does, it's foolish and doesn't make sense in the long run, but we do want to look at things and say, "Hey, can we work out contracts?" And, you know, for example, should we just not even worry about hauling snow anymore? 15 years ago, the city staff did not haul snow. We would contract out for somebody to do it. Over a period of time, when we were trying to save money, we said, "Hey, we can haul snow cheaper and easier, and we can, under most normal circumstances." We cannot in a situation like we learned in this past February. Also, we looked at, and the public works, I think it was just two years ago, asked us to look at privatizing plowing of our parking lots, and would it be cheaper to do that? So we accepted bids, and again, we were considerably lower than what those bids were. But maybe we're at a point where we say, "You know what, we understand it's going to be more, but we still want to go ahead and we want to have somebody else do it." It's not a money thing, it's a service thing, and those will be the kinds of things that we will evaluate. And I think lastly, is one of the things that we learned too, is that we're going to try and get out and enhance our communications early, probably starting with award meetings, and explaining to people what those expectations are. Really, I think all of us know that we've had some pretty mild winters the last couple of years, and I think we've all become spoiled in that situation. And I think, again, we need to just get out and do a better job of educating people about what the expectations are, what the priorities are, and I think that will help. Because I will say, although we received a lot of calls, I know you received an awful lot of calls, that once you're able to sit down with a resident, explain what was happening, what was going on, most of the time, they were very reasonable, and they were very accepting of what was going on. But, you know, it was tough and it took a lot of time, staff time, to deal with these calls as they were coming in as well, and you'd like to make sure that you're focused on your operations and not spending too much time answering those questions. So that's something we'll be working on as well before next year, and hopefully next year, we'll get back to having the mild winters and then with this all be forgotten. So that concludes my comments, and as the mayor indicated, that we certainly are providing up-to-date information about the status of any new storms, any operational issues, and we will continue to do so on the city's website. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody on the council might have with respect to staff's snow and salting operations.
... to approve the additional purchase of salt that we had.
Yes, you do. (laughing)
I'll make a motion for the additional purchase of salt.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Haddad.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
And I didn't mean to cut off questions with that question, if anybody has any questions.
I just have one question, Bob, and that is, now that we have more salt in, are we going to attack some of those slick spots? We, you know, we know over the weekend, what was ice, and then it got wet, now it's polished marble ice, and some of the streets are pretty rough, so are the guys going to hit that?
They are, and let me just go back to this past weekend. I know when it was raining, some of you may have seen, we had front-end loaders out, we had other vehicles out, and what they were trying to do with the rising temperatures to try and get rid of some of that ice that was on the road, and I think they were able to do a pretty good job. Where there's a real problem is on what I would call the curbs, it's really narrowed down a number of streets, and hopefully, it's not expected, I don't think, in the next couple of days, but once the temperature rises a little to mid-20s, then we can go back and hit some of those other areas as well.
I'm just wondering also, do you have some guys that are going to go around and clear the drains, because I know the water's coming down? I see some nodding back there, but the residents are concerned about that, that the water has no place to go, as well as from the yards. I know there's a lot of frozen water sitting out there that as soon as it gets warm, it's going to look for a place to go.
Right. And we have, actually, the city attorney and I were just chatting about this before the council meeting, we were out, our crews were out over the weekend doing some of that. Much of it was based on either their own personal observations or phone calls that we got from the police department, that there was ponding water, take a look at this area. So we were able to do some of that, but if the residents either A, want to go out and chip away some of that themselves, or if they want to call us, we'll get it on the list and we'll take a look at it as soon as, again, as the temperatures get a little warmer than they are right now.
Good, thank you, and I think that's important, that if you see it flooding and you're able to move the snow away, it's a big help for everybody in the neighborhood.
Bob, in terms of the state roads, you know, what are we hearing from Lake County and the state in terms of, I guess it's Waukegan and 60 and 41, you know, in terms of their salt supply? You know, I know from personal experiences, those roads weren't in particularly good shape either. It's been, I think, an ongoing problem even, not just in the last month or so. You know, what are they saying about their supplies and their ability to get out, and, you know, are we staying on top of them to make sure those roads are getting taken care of?
I don't know if, Michael, if you want to address that, or if Ken does, my understanding is they do have some, they're not, they're not telling anybody how much they have. I think they don't want people contacting, but we do contact them regularly to try and stay on top of it. And I will be honest with you, we've also been trying to stay on top of them to get potholes fixed as well.
Potholes.
We have some names of contact people at IDOT, so if residents want, they can call the city, and we will get in touch with IDOT, and to the extent that we can, get them out there as quickly as possible to take care of either icing situations or some of the other ones.
And the roads they're responsible for, 41, 60, Waukegan, 22, I guess, is that?
I think that's it.
It's 176.
176, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely.
Well, I had a few questions to say that, literally, this was a perfect storm with the temperature and the, the temperature dropping and the snow coming and the salt availability dropping also. Does, you know, I know we have to clean off the streets, but off of every street, you've got literally scores and hundreds of driveways that are being plowed. And what is the residence, what are the residents' obligations to make sure that whatever they remove off of their driveways does not undermine whatever the street department is trying to do to make sure that the streets are passable?
Well, I, I think for the most part, the various snowplow operators working in town do a pretty good job, because they're, they're back year after year, we tend to know who they are. What happens sometimes, though, is that they will plow out the resident's driveway, they will not either push it far enough, you know, to the other side of the street, or they leave these windrows in the middle of the road as well, which do cause other problems, because more times than not, our trucks have already been through, and now all of a sudden, as you get on a street, it's windrow after windrow after windrow, based on when the homeowner's plows have come through. So we would just want to encourage them, that if you're going to do it, that's great, but the good ones will come back and, and get the windrows, if you will, on both sides, and dress it up a little, so that we don't have that kind of problem.
So it'd be an important part of the communication at the ward meetings and mayor's letters and so on and so forth. Also, I, you know, we're going to get past this, we're pretty much past it already, and we'll move on, and it'll be a memory, but I think it's important that we, you know, we learn important lessons from it, and, and most importantly, I think, is our inventory system for salt. And, you know, like any service business where you have certain amount of inventory, there's somebody that's in charge of making sure that the inventory does not get depleted, and you have supplies coming back in line to replenish the inventory. So what can we do to make sure that our future supplies of salt are steady and ongoing, and even that we have an access to some emergency replacement if this happens next year or 2011?
Right. Well, I, I think a couple of things. Number one, ultimately, having the larger store facility gives us greater flexibility. Number two is by upping our allocation from the state of Illinois. And even though 2,100 tons is what we have averaged use over the last 15 years, we've learned, I think, that we would rather have a little more extra, and if we have the storage capacity, who cares? Because we can just hold it and keep it until next year. I think the other thing, and this is what I think people don't appreciate, is the delivery of salt comes in end loaders, basically 25-ton end loaders. So if you order 400 tons, that's 16 end loader trucks that are coming, so it's not going to just show up within an hour. It probably will take place over a course of three or four days. Now, in the summertime and during the early parts of the winter, it's not a big deal, because they're just running those end loaders, or the semis regularly. I mean, they're just showing up periodically whenever, you know, either us or any of these other communities called. What really happened at one point in time, though, is all the communities were calling at the same time, saying, "I need salt." And so that's what you really have to guard against, because then it becomes not even a problem of supply, it's a problem of delivery. And how is that salt going to get delivered to these various communities who all want their same salt at the same time? And that sort of circles us back to making sure that we're able to have enough supply on hand, that we don't get down to that critical level that we unfortunately got ourselves into this year.
I'm going to guess that salt suppliers around the country, or at least those in this kind of winterland, are going to begin thinking of ways that they can perhaps make a few more bucks off of the fears that municipalities have. So do you know if there's a possibility that we could, as a municipality, buy options, if you will, puts for futures of salt, and in other words, sort of put some money down to have a, a reserve on hand if we want to call down on it and so on?
Well, actually, that came up at a, at a previous meeting too, and, you know, certainly the staff will explore that. To a certain extent, I think we do have that right now with the state, in that we are basically, you know, saying that somewhere between 70 and 130%, we're going to buy each year. I think part of the problem is, when you go through that state bidding process, we are committing to them. And so like Cargill, for example, who was the supplier that ended up buying after the fact, we didn't commit any, to purchase any from them until it got to that point, and the problem was, I think, that's when everybody is calling these various suppliers and trying to get the same. And so unless we're prepared to commit upfront, so for example, we'll say, "We'll buy so much from the state within that range, and we'll buy so much from Cargill within that range," that I'm not sure they have an incentive to do that.
And there's no economic incentive. If we're going to go this route, clearly buying more from the state, or upping our allocation greatly with the state, is economically better than buying it on the spot market after the fact. So if I was going to buy and want a put, I'd want to buy a put at $40 rather than buying a put at $190. So I'd just up my state contract and take the 70% and call it a day.
Well, yeah, and depending upon what your needs might turn out to be and so on, I mean, it, it might be that a seller out there would, would take a few extra bucks upfront and take the risk that you won't need the extra deliveries that next winter and so on. Anyway, it's just an idea, I thought it would be worthwhile exploring.
Clearly, having extra storage is the key, and one of the things I think we should also might want to look at is off-site storage. I mean, obviously, finding storage in the, in the confines of Lake Forest is not easy, especially given some of the environmental, but could we, you know, find a community that's 20, an industrial park 20 miles away and try and get some storage that way? Because obviously, it wouldn't be as convenient as having it right in our backyard, but, you know, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we had to send trucks down to replenish our supply out of, you know, a big storage facility that we contracted for down, you know, by O'Hare, or, you know, out west or somewhere. So that might be another avenue to look at.
No, it's a good point.
Yeah, when I, in looking at this, over years, trying to deal with this problem, I mean, the issue was storage, and it came down to storage. The other issue, and I think, Bob, first of all, I think the staff did a great job, and it was a very, very difficult situation. I think, I agree with your comments about the city trying to make every effort here. I think the key to dealing with these events, though, is to hit them hard and hit them early, you know, and that's, when you're handicapped by not having the material, you're really, you're really in trouble. Because you cannot ever catch up on these kinds of things. And I think, if, in looking at the numbers that you put up on the board there, it just strikes me that this issue is a, this is a priority issue, to have our streets cleaned, and to have our city able safe, and our sidewalks safe, and other areas safe. As a percentage of budget, it just strikes me as a very low amount. And I think that as, over the course of this year, after, you know, the dust settles here and in the budget, we ought to think about, you know, frankly, upping the budget, both in terms of having storage capacity and having backup or additional salt available, so that we never get in this situation again. And maybe that means we have to spend another 100,000 or 200,000, but I think we need to bite the bullet. This is an issue, I think, that's safety and it's, I mean, it's treacherous out there still.
Right.
And as you know, I've, I've been down at least three times.
Of course, you always, you always, you know, wrestle when you have something that's a...
Coming out of the lane, but we all talk about that one.
And this is in the morning, going to work. No, no.
You always wrestle with a little bit, when you have an event that, you know, it's a two stand, three day, standard deviation event, that, you know, you're not going to see this, you know, we'll prepare for this, then we won't see another winner like this for 15 years. Of course, if we don't prepare for it, it'll be like 30 years ago, where we'll get two winners back in a row. But I do think you're right, from a budget perspective, and we got to try and find some solutions that are, you know, economically, you know, don't kill us, but at the same time, work to, to address the situation.
But at a policy's level, aren't we, don't we just need to kind of get over the threshold and say, "Look, we cannot, we cannot accept what was the result, we should be able to deal with it." Because practically, equipment-wise and material-wise, we could have dealt with this problem, and we weren't able to do it because we didn't have the means to do it. So at a policy level, we have to say, "Are we ready to, to be able to be prepared to do that?"
And as, and as an effectual issue, financing this $100,000 as we build the new MS facility over a 20-year period is miniscule in, in the big picture of life, so we do need to be properly prepared for how we're going forward.
That concludes my remarks this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is comments by council members. Hearing none, I'm going to move on to council committee reports, finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a finance committee meeting earlier this evening, we really spent time on two topics. One was discussing our upcoming bond sale, which will take place on Monday, March 17th. We will be looking to raise $9.75 million for both Route 60 Park as well as the municipal services building. We are timing this, often better to be lucky than good, but we are timing this perfectly, and we'll get very attractive rates on this, given our true AAA credit rating. So, you know, the residents should feel very good about that. Second item we discussed was our capital improvement program. We continue to refine our five-year capital improvement budget, program budget, and we made a lot of progress on that, and we'll finalize that when we have our long session on March 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the public works committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met earlier, late this afternoon, and had a nice discussion about a broad range of subjects. First and foremost was Western Avenue. As most, most people know, we are undertaking a major improvement on Western Avenue, primarily infrastructure improvements, but really kind of focused on some of the minor aesthetic areas. A very healthy discussion, but no conclusion at this point. Next item, we talked a little about redoing the access point down to the beach, we're going to reconstruct the road that goes down to our main beach, and we will do that in the fall. And we have a recommendation for an engineer, or at least engineering services for that, that task. Then we discussed our city lights and the standards that we expect in the future, the historical nature of, of the lights, and we have a number of those that exist... And we have a number of those that exist in the community. And also talked about the resurfacing program. And we're going to probably recommend improving and upping the amount of money that goes into the resurfacing program for roads. And finally, we talked about and approved an engineering company to do the engineering for the Old Elm Bridge reconstruction. That's a project that's being funded 80% by the state and with our neighbors to the south, that is Highland Park. So a lot was talked about, and hopefully he made some progress, and will be in front of the council for their approval shortly.
Like right now.
Like right now. That's, shortly is kind of a vague term, but...
Would you like to...
I'd like to. I would like to. I see I'm still up, huh?
Yeah. The ball's still here, and we're still on the pitches.
Okay. Well, here's the first one up is consideration of a resolution approving MFT funds for the 2000 street resurfacing program. And I'm not going to mention those streets because it will probably make a lot of people sad. Two, authorization of the interim agreement.
Let's deal with them.
You want to take, take this one at a time?
They have to go one at a time.
Well, I'd look for a motion for those approval, and that's in the amount of $997,272.
So moves.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is authorization to enter into an engineering and joint agreement for the reconstruction of Old Elm Bridges, the agreement with Highland Park.
Can I ask one question on that?
Yes.
Looks like we're covering this, and then it's been reimbursed.
That's correct.
Why are we doing it that way? Or why do we have to do it that way?
Other than Mr. Magnus is a nice guy, I'll ask him to come forward and explain it.
Highland Park going to salt our roads for...
We're going to put sand.
One go around.
Their bin's a lot bigger than ours.
This is actually a joint share between IDOT, the City of Lake Forest, and Highland Park. IDOT's paying 80%. We have to upfront the money for the engineering services. We get reimbursed from IDOT. And the agreement that we have with Highland Park, we split the 20% share. So it's 10% ultimately that we pay.
That isn't the question he's asking. He's asking, "Why do we have to pay upfront and wait for Highland Park to pay us back? Why can't they pay their..."
That's the agreement that we have with Highland Park. There has to be a lead with IDOT on this project, and the city's the lead.
We're the lead. That's the answer.
There's the answer.
There we go. Is, is this the engineering firm that did the design work?
Ah, yes.
Have you been happy with their services?
Very, very much.
Did you entertain any other proposals for the construction side?
No, no. They were, they did the design services, and IDOT also agreed that they should do the construction services also.
Need a motion for all three?
I would like a motion for all three. West Jennings Associates, they're an outstanding firm, and I've had experience with them. And this total, just tonight, though, is $149,000, I believe.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
The final item for approval from me is a word of contracts for the design engineering services for the North Beach Access Road reconstruction. Amount is $49,820 to the company, Clark Dietz.
Questions on that? Motion to approve?
Second.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, this is going to be done this fall?
This fall.
This fall.
We're thinking of doing it over Lake Forest Day? No, just kidding. Really, it'll be this fall after Labor Day, and, and then going, done before the winter.
Will be done with the, the North Shore Sanitary District will be done with the project by then on the...
Boy, I hope so. Right now, they're still on schedule to be done by Memorial Day.
Okay, great. Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay, we're just need...
Motion in a second.
We just need the vote.
A motion.
Motion in second. May I call for a roll call, please?
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Swarthout. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone wish to speak to the council on non-agenda items this evening? Hearing none, I'm moving to the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 22 and February 4 regular council meetings. Any additions, alterations, or corrections? Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Moving on to ordinances. First is a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance in the side yard setback requirement at a property located at 158 Adderich. Megan, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This variance request is regarding a property at 158 Adderich Road. This property is in a neighborhood where the majority of the homes were built prior to current zoning regulations. As a result, the homes are non-conforming with respect to the setback requirements. The Bakers own the property, and they wish to update and expand their existing home with the addition of, or construction of an addition to the rear. The zoning variance that was before the Zoning Board of Appeals on January 28 was for these two one-story bays that project into the 10-foot side yard setback. There was no objections from the public at the meeting, and the zoning board voted unanimously to approve the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. It would be appropriate if the council waived first reading and granted final approval.
Motion to waive first reading?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for acceptance?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Next item is a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the approval of an amendment to the special use permit approving a master site plan for Woodlands Academy and of the Sacred Heart located at 760 East Wesley Road. This is for first reading or final approval. And this is presented by Peter Guttan. Good evening, Peter.
You, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a site plan of the Woodlands Academy property. Just to orient you, Wesley Road is at the bottom of the map. Sheridan Road wraps around to the right-hand side. This is the Barra property adjacent to the Woodlands property, which is back here. At the January meeting, the zoning board did consider this request, which is an amendment to the special use permit, approving a master site plan, which will allow for expansion and upgrading of the existing Woodlands Academy facility. Specifically, it will allow for expansion of the academic wing to provide for new science facilities in this area, and expansion and creation of a performing arts area at the, towards the northeast corner of the property. In both of these cases, these are existing activities and uses that are already occurring at the school, simply providing for upgraded facilities for those uses. The, the zoning board did carefully consider this request. There were no objections from any of the adjacent property owners. These are really the types of improvements that will allow for this school to remain competitive with other private institutions in the area. Zoning board did unanimously recommend approval, and if you'd like to do so, it'd be appropriate to waive the first reading and grant final approval.
Peter, I have a question. I see that this is for some future work, I guess, time unknown because it's dependent upon the school getting some funding. Do we have any idea if this is going to start while Barra construction might be going on and create some traffic problems or overlap?
I believe the school is very close to coming forward with plans for the science wing expansion, and those will be reviewed by the building review board first. So that, that funding, I believe, is very close to being in place and would likely be on a timeframe sooner than major construction at the Barra site. The Performing Arts Center really is, I think they see that as a longer-term project. The funding for that is not yet in place.
Peter, I used, I had the privilege of living right behind the tennis court and always found that gate was open strangely, but you, I would, I would say, I'm all for this. I think this is really an important thing, to be able to encourage this institution to be able to continue to thrive and be competitive, as you pointed out. I do, the only concern I would have is in the future, as they developed, continue to develop, that we don't use that setback on the north as a long-angle parking lot. And I think there is some current parking that's up there. I'm sure that other plan commissions and zoning boards in the future will be sensitive towards that. But you'll, you'll see the lights of the cars going in, probably 20 homes that the building's backed up to. So, you know, any expansion of parking probably would be better on the left or at least the west, western part of the property. I'm sure you're aware of it.
Any other comments? No, I think it's a wonderful program, and I'd like to make the motion to waive first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept now.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Haddad?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a tentative approval of the Falling Water subdivision. Good evening, Ms. Ernie. I think we have everybody from the staff up there now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I think you've heard me say before, there really aren't any simple properties left to develop, and this probably is one of the most difficult properties that has come to, come before you yet. Just to orient everyone, this is a 14-acre piece of property. It is located east of Telegraph Road and north of Old Mill. This is Waukegan. Just to bring you in a little bit closer, and to point out a couple of the unique aspects of this property, again, Telegraph Road, Old Mill, the railroad tracks. You note the unusual configuration of this property, very limited street frontage. There were, previously, there was a home here and several structures in this area. There's an existing access through from Old Mill, but overall, the property was pretty much vacant. There were probably about 200 elm trees that have been removed on this property over the last five years. They all had Dutch elm disease. This project first went to the Plan Commission for Information in September 2006. The petitioners were probably working with the city on this project at least two years prior to that. This property included, I believe, seven different wetlands on the property, included some floodplain issues as well. And in this case, we had, fortunate to have a petitioner and a very strong team of consultants who really worked through those technical issues and worked with the appropriate outside agencies to resolve those issues before they came forward. As I mentioned, this came before the Plan Commission in September 2006. For the following 18 months, the petitioners addressed the issues that were raised at that Plan Commission meeting, met a number of times with immediate neighbors, because this property has some unique relationship with neighboring properties. And then they came back before the Plan Commission in December of 2007. At that time, the Plan Commission did see it fit to take action to recommend approval, tentative approval of the subdivision plan, subject to several conditions of approval and some issues yet to be worked out. But what is before you tonight is a request for tentative approval of the subdivision. In this case, the subdivision request does incorporate a request for a variance from the provision in our code that limits access for private roads to five lots, as well as a request for a variance from lot sizes, and I'll go over that in just a moment. I know you all have this in front of you, but it's a bit difficult to see. The access to the, to the five lots that will be created on this 14-acre parcel will be across this narrow strip, will come in from Telegraph Road. In addition to the five new lots, Lot 1 in this area, 2, 3, 4, and 5, three existing lots will also take access off the private road. Originally, the developer was content to just create a private road that would only serve the five lots proposed as part of this 14-acre subdivision. However, after looking at this development, staff and then the Plan Commission really encouraged the developer to work with these neighboring property owners. Currently, these properties take access off of a driveway that comes in and would essentially run parallel to the proposed private road. That really didn't seem to make much sense. The neighbors also were very interested in taking access off of the new private road. And just to clarify that point a little bit more, the edge of the property proposed for subdivision runs right along here. In working with these property owners, the developer actually pulled the road away from the front of their properties. And as part of this subdivision, land on the north side of this road will actually be deeded over to these adjacent property owners, and they will, so their lots will get bigger, and they will take access off of the new private road. For that reason, the Plan Commission is supportive of the request to allow this private road to serve eight lots, rather than the limitation of five that the code currently provides for. The other issue I wanted to point out is that, as I noted, there were a tremendous amount of wetlands and floodplain issues on this property. There will be many water features on this property. There's been, as we presented this subdivision to the realtors on a number of occasions, there's been quite a few jokes about the name Falling Waters, that it could be Rising Waters or Too Much Water. But all of these open areas are outlots that in total are about six and a half acres. So of a 14-acre parcel, we will get five lots and about six and a half acres of open space, which will do a very good job of accommodating all the water, all the water that flows to and through this property. You have a number of conditions included in the staff report. Most of those are standard conditions, but there are also unusual conditions that require monitoring of ponds in the pond subdivision across Waukegan Road during construction to ensure there isn't silt accumulation in those ponds. As we work with the petitioner over the next couple of months, getting this back to the Plan Commission, we are prepared with final engineering comments to be issued as soon as you take action. We will be finalizing a number of issues, and we expect that to be brought back to you. When it is brought back to you for final approval, it will include an ordinance that will address the variances. I know there are, Mr. Bender and Mr. Byron are in the audience if you have questions. If you feel appropriate to do so, it'd be appropriate for you to approve a motion granting tentative approval of the subdivision. And then we'll continue to work with the petitioner and Plan Commission to finalize this.
Kathy, I just have a question, because I was on the Plan Commission when it first came, and it's so much better now, what the Plan Commission and petitioner have provided now, from what I saw. I'm just, there were a lot of voices from the neighbors, especially 1425 Telegraph and 1431. Have, have the, have you felt that, that all those issues, it was a very, very, I think, not argumentative, but there were a lot of concerns from the neighbors, and it sounds like some of the things that have been compromised have done it. But have we heard anything else from the neighbors?
The neighbors I've heard from are very pleased with the outcome. The neighbors I've heard from are very pleased with the outcome. You will notice the road has been pulled away. In fact, there's been a compromise. There have been some trees that were initially slated for preservation that due to the relocation of the road, the plan commission approved a removal. So I have not heard from any neighbors who have continuing concerns. I think there is concern as construction happens that we need to monitor the site very closely, and we will do that.
Thank you.
It was one dissenting vote on the planning commission, plan commission. Can you describe what that, why the dissenting vote occurred?
Yes, I can. These lots up here, although there is sufficient land to create two 66,000-square-foot lots, because these are now accessed directly off of the private road, they are considered lots in depth. The majority of the plan commission felt it was important that the lots, the lot sizes for these two lots be allowed to be below that requirement of 66,000 to ensure that the outlot, essentially the waterways, would be under the jurisdiction of the overall homeowners' association. There was some concern that if we have swales, wetland areas on a single property, there's less certainty that it will be properly maintained with it under the jurisdiction of the association. There will be appropriate language in the declaration of covenants to ensure that it's
Are we, can you share with me about the roadway design? I know both, how big it's going to be, I know these private roads, sometimes when we approve them, we want to make sure they're sufficient. And I would think, especially with all the water falling in this area, that we would have adequate sewers and curbs and standards by which the development's going to be constructed.
I can't quote all the numbers exactly, but I can assure you that engineering staff has looked at this plan probably seven different times. The road does meet all our private road standards, and engineering staff is very comfortable with the drainage plan and all the work that has been done.
I just want to say, following this over time, it really has come a long, long way from what we first saw, and I'm really pleased to see it move ahead. And I'd like to make the motion for...
Can I just hold you for one second?
Okay, one moment.
Is there a comment from the, I saw there was somebody who wanted to make a comment from the public, so please come forward over the, and just identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Audrey Berish. I'm a resident of what we call the Evergreen subdivision, which is just on the other side of Waukegan Road from Falling Waters. I'm simply here to express a continuing concern of our neighborhood as to the effect of the development on our ponds. I know it's been alluded to earlier, and so we're closely monitoring it. We're glad that the city is as well. I wanted to give you an update that we have been communicating with Mr. Byram, and we're very pleased that he's been so responsive. But there's no meeting of the minds yet, so I just wanted the council to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to make the motion for tentative approval and get this thing, the engineering finished, et cetera.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Haddad.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
And as we move forward with this, Kathy, I do hope that we are going to address her concerns about the other subdivision being taken care of. Correct? We're on the new business. The next item on the agenda is the authorization to award construction contract for Deer Path
I was so happy to see five bidders on a park-and-wreck deal that I, and beside myself, I want to make the motion before you even say anything.
Can I just echo that? I was very happy to see five myself. There was a little, a little praying going on before the bid opening, so. Just real quickly, I was here in February, and the council did approve, authorized us to move ahead with ordering the playground equipment for this playground. It is Deer Path Community preschool playground, be located behind the Recreation Center on Hastings, and it will be open to the public as well as serve as a playground for our kindergarten preschool. So just a, just a quick wrap-up on that for the community. The playground, this is the design up here, and as I mentioned, it will be fenced in and have play features, swing sets, sand play. We're very excited about the fact we do have planned to put a port-in-place surface in this playground, which makes it more accessible, as well as it's a green because it is permeable. And also, it really will reduce our maintenance expense at this particular playground. So that was just a design that I thought I'd share with the community and with you so you can kind of see what is in the works with this bid that we did. The next item I had was just to move right ahead to the bids. In your packet, you saw, we do have five, five bidders that came in for this project. Blue Malls Maintenance Services was our low bid, and it did come in at our budget, which is 152,600. We did opt to do an alternate for the port-in-place surface, even though we requested city council approval to do the, the competitive bid that was through US Communities. We did include this as an alternate because it is a very pricey item, and we wanted to see where that would come in at. And it actually did come in lower than the, the national bid that we were utilizing for our national price line. So we are recommending to go with this lower alternate bid than with the US Communities price that we used in February for you. And you can see there's, like I say, the five different companies that bid on it and the price range. Cooling Landscape, by the way, was the company that bid this past fall on this project at the tune of 527,000. So we can see by the redesign, we did, were able to bring this project down, and having multiple bidders, we got the price in line with what we needed to do. I put the budget in your packet for you as well, and as you can see, we do anticipate that we will be under budget from what we had set aside funds from, from the public park and public land fund from '08 and '09. So we had a budget of 355 after all of the project is completed. We are doing some of the work ourselves. We will be doing the landscaping through the Parks Crew. They'll be putting in all the drinking fans, the benches, et cetera, trying to help us keep the cost down on this project. And we did put some contingency in there for some of the items that might be unknown for the grading. We do have some unique grading aspects at this particular playground because where the drainage happens behind the building. So we should be hopefully under budget by about $40,000, which is a nice thing to have a project come in at. So at this point, I'm requesting city council approval to award the construction contract to Blue Malls Maintenance Service in the amount of 179,100, and that would be paid out of the Park and Public Land Fund.
And I know I'm holding Alderman Marsh, making his proposal, but I just have one question. This is a wide variance of bid rates. What are we missing here? I can't believe there could be almost $90,000 difference between one contract to another. That just seems like too wide a variance. What am I missing?
You know what? I was concerned about that, too. I mean, really, the only bid that came in at our budget was the Blue Malls, and they're out of Wisconsin, an unknown company to us. We did check all the references. They have done projects in Illinois recently with Arlington Heights Park District, Elmhurst Park District, so they have done some park district work in the area. But all the rest of them do kind of stay within a range, except Cooling Landscape, and they were our very high bid before. I called a couple other park districts, and we're seeing this right now. We're seeing a very wide variance happening with construction contracts. And primarily, it's because of the increase that they're seeing in the, in the wage and how that's being applied to different subs that they're using and bringing in to do these different projects. And this project will use some different subs. We've got concrete work, we've got grading work, we have installation of the actual playground, we have the port-in-place surfaces. So there's many different subs for a very small project, and I think that's where they're having a hard time gauging. The other thing we found out is, because this is a very tight timetable, which we're trying to accomplish this, they were very concerned on what would happen if they got caught with weather and they had to do overtime costs. So some of these companies built in a lot more expense with the assumption that they have to pay overtime to meet our timeline. Even though, an addendum we did send out to them said that should weather become a factor, the city will work with whoever's awarded the contract to come up with what we fair as a fair and appropriate overtime wage. But some of them were still nervous that they would get caught with that, so.
Bob, do we have to worry about prevailing wage here, and how do we get them, you know, as Blumenthal's out of Wisconsin, is there a prevailing wage issue at all, or am I just sparking up the wrong tree?
No, there's prevailing wage on any city project, regardless of where they're from.
It's the contractor's burden.
And it would be stipulated in the bid document.
Yes, it was stipulated in our bid that they had to pay that.
Just want to make sure.
Mayor, your question was interesting, is what are we missing here? It's not what are we missing here, it's what did we get here? What we got here is competition, and that's what public bidding's all about. And I know I sound like a broken record, but...
That's what we saw with the port-in-place.
I will, on that note, I will make a motion to award a contract for the Deer Path Community preschool playground to Blue Malls Maintenance Service in the amount of 179,100.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Before we do that, I think we have a procedural question, and I guess, Mayor, I need clarification. At the last council meeting, they did approve a contract for the port-in-place with whatever that company was.
US Communities.
And you have, I believe, you haven't, or you haven't put in the invoice, if you will.
We have not, we have not done anything with US Communities for the port-in-place component.
So in that case, might I suggest that the motion include a rescission of the decision, of the vote on February 4th?
It's just of a portion of it.
Just for the port-in-place.
Okay, and I would include that as well.
I'll include that in my second.
Okay, now can we have the roll call vote, guys?
I'm happy we're clear on that one.
Clear as mud.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Haddad.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Is it time for any additional items for the council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
City council meeting is adjourned.